City Council Committee on Finance will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
I know.
Councillors Cadiz?
Here.
Camara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yes, I'm here.
Carrera?
Here.
Reposo?
Yeah.
And President Lullaby, do the vote.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item is citizens' input.
Two people have signed up. First person is Debbie Kenny, 571 Florence Street, Fall River. Subject, I assume, is diamond. If you just want to go to that microphone, sorry.
My name is Debbie Kenny, and I am the president of the Diamond Outreach Committee. I am also a retiree of Diamond, having worked at Diamond for 29 years as the business manager. I'm here tonight asking for your support for what we consider a very important issue. And you'll see tonight the presentation by the architect. There's been a great deal of work done to get us to this point. It's been eight years in process, and certainly the first five years, we were denied the first step, but the last three years, we have been in the process, and we're very excited. We consider the grant from the MSBA of $145 million as if we won the lottery. And it is an incredible grant. It's a gift. Should this not proceed at this time, we would be set years back. And we're also very concerned that the MSBA is talking about reducing its percentage of reimbursement, and that would certainly have a detrimental effect. So I ask you to please support it. I'd also like to remind you that of the 1,450 students at Diamond, 1,000 of them are from Fall River. So we don't treat our students as if they're from different communities, but when they come to Diamond, the Diamond students and graduates, but the reality is, Fall River does have the majority by a long shot of the number of students. I had the opportunity last week to watch the Finance Committee and the School Committee, because I thought we were going to be on the agenda, and I heard a city councilman, I believe it was Councilman Lee, say something that I think it's important for me to comment on. I believe, and if I'm saying this incorrectly, please do correct me. I believe, Councilman Lee, you said, "I'm not a no vote when it comes to investment, when they can reduce long-term costs." And, believe me, I understand that. My whole career has been in finance, and I thoroughly agree with you. This is one of those investments. The building is very tired and very old. Should this not succeed, then investments are going to have to be made. In this process, we had an evaluation of the building, and the architects will address that. It served its life. It served its useful life. Any improvements that we're going to have to make going forward, should this not be approved, would be then followed the regional agreement, and they would be assessed to all the communities with no reimbursement from the state.
15 seconds.
I'm all done.
You have 15 seconds.
Oh, okay. Well, in any event, thank you so much. Please, please consider this. This is very important to the community, as well as all of the students, the graduates, and the students-to-be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Carl Hetzler, 195 North Ogden Street, subject diamond.
Thank you very much. Good evening, councillors. My name's Carl Hetzler. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Fall River. I'm also a business owner of H&amp;S Tool and Engineering located in Fall River. In 1978, I attended Diamond. Actually, graduated in 78. Started in 74, so I am a graduate of Diamond. I employ their students. I served on their advisory board. I served six years as a member of the school committee, and I actually even had the opportunity on a couple of occasions to go in and substitute teach in a machine shop while I was on the advisory board. So I know a little bit about what I'm talking about here. Diamond is tired. Diamond lacks space. Diamond has a lot more students today than it did when I attended. The machine shop that I'm very familiar with is crowded. There's not enough room anymore for the modern equipment that they need to bring in. We need to make this investment. We need to do it because vocational education, and I'm sure all of you would agree, vocational education is very, very important. But being able to teach it in an environment that gives the students the room they need and gives the faculty the room they need for the equipment that they will need to bring in is super, super important. Now, there's a lot of issues that you wrestle with, and money is always an issue. If money was not a matter here, it would be easy. We'd build a new school, and all of you would agree with that. But we know money's a problem. But this is an investment that we have to make. This will serve our community for 50 years moving forward. And if we don't take the opportunity that's presented to us now, the question is, when? It's only going to get more expensive. Financing's going to be, the rates on borrowing money is going to go up. It's going to get more and more difficult to make this tough decision. If there's any way that this can be done through the normal operating budget of the city of Fall River, I would ask all of you to look deep into that and find out if there is a way. This is a defining moment for our community regarding vocational education. We need to do this, and as a community partnered with Somerset, Swansea, and Westport, we can do this. Sure, it'll be a little difficult. It'll be a little difficult financially, but guess what? In the long term, 10 years from now, we'll be looking back, it'll be like nothing. The money that we're spending 10 years from now will be like nothing compared to today's dollars. And 20 years from now, it'll even be less of an issue. But the school will be here for 50 years, serving this community. So please, as a lifelong resident, as a business owner, I'm asking this council to do everything possible to find a way to make this happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk? We're in citizens' input?
Yes, we do. Madam President and members of the Fall River City Council, I'm expressing my desire for the Fall River City Council to reject the approval of the new Diamond Regional. A vote against this project is not anti-education, anti-student, or even anti-Diamond. A no vote would be a vote for the citizens of Fall River and the entire region. Fall River is the last to vote on this project, and as such, you are the only wall to an automatic approval and increased taxes into sending this item to the entire region for a vote by the citizens. I please and ask that you vote no on the Diamond project in order for it to be sent to the district, so the voice of the people can be heard. No one is saying that Diamond is not entitled to a new building, and that Diamond has not outgrown their existing building, but we are saying that this is just bad timing. This year in July, the debt exclusion for the new Durfee will kick in and add additional taxes to the backs of the Fall River property owner. We see annual increases in our water, sewer, and taxes, and we do not see any return for the people of our, to the people or for this city. Please think before you deprive the people the right to be heard. Nine people should not have the sole authority to expend this money on behalf of the people of Fall River. The people must be heard. Please send this item to the voters by voting no on this project. Thank you, CJ Ferry. And we also got another citizen input this afternoon. I am in receipt of the following text message sent from councillor Trotley to former councillor Chris Peckham. This message is the most unethical thing I have ever seen. Councillor Lee must resign without any further delay. This was a text message sent between councillor Lee and Chris Peckham. Do you want me to read the message itself, Madam President?
If it's part of the...
It is part of the message. It says, "Dust off your suits." Councillor Peckham replies, "Why, what's up? Leo is going to the hospital tomorrow for a heart condition. He's out today." Oh, not good. Prayers for his family. Absolutely. Dust, but dust off your suits." Chris Peckham replies, "I'll start, but I'd honestly much rather him ride off his last term. Keep me updated, of course." This is signed Patrick Higgins.
Anything further, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Councillor in citizens' input, councillor Lee?
Councillor Pelletier has been a gentleman to me from the very first day we worked together as councillors, so obviously, this is really, you know, not something that I'm happy to see out there, but the choice of words, obviously, were wrong, but I do not, and I never meant any ill will towards councillor Pelletier. And whether I'm forgiven or not for any of those comments is irrelevant. I just know that I didn't mean any negative harm towards the councillor, and I have nothing but respect for him. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further, Member Council? Thank you. Item two in the committee on finance is the presentation of the MSBA project for Diamond Regional Vocational Technical High School. If the folks from Diamond would like to come down to the table. And before you start, if you'd all please give your name and address for the record. On the, in the mic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan, push a chair around. Push a chair around to your left side.
Good evening. Elvio Carrera, 20 Millers Lane, Somerset, Massachusetts.
Hi, I'm Tim Alex, 43, Minister Brook Drive, Simsbury, Connecticut.
Excuse me, could you also give your title as well, if you don't mind?
Sure. I'm with Colliers International. I'm the OPM for the project, the owner's project manager.
Greg Joint, 67 Turnpike Street, Easton, Mass. I work for Castle Booze Associates, and I am the architect for the project.
Rajiv Narra, 1364 Robeson Street. I represent Fall River and the School Committee of Diamond.
Father J Mello, 189 Essex Street, also the Fall River School Committee.
Joan Menard, 4700 North Main Street, also on the Diamond School Committee.
I'll just go back. I'm the superintendent for Greater Fall River Vocational and Diamond Regional. And I do want to thank you for giving us the opportunity here to share our MSBA story with you. We know that over the past 20 years, the city of Fall River has invested a significant amount of time and money into the promotion of education. New elementary schools, middle schools, high schools have been constructed in the city to support the very best learning environment for your children. City leaders have made difficult choices with a clear eye on doing what is best and most appropriate for the future of the city and for the region. On Stonehaven Road, we're at that same crossroads. Our current campus has been a beacon when it comes to promotion of education and skill development. Since 1968, and realistically, 1912, Diamond Regional has promoted lifelong learning and introduced thousands of children to content areas which have changed their lives. Unfortunately, our campus can no longer keep this path. The current Diamond has given all it can. Moving forward, our current school cannot support the same outcomes that it has for the past 50-plus years. We've outgrown our current structure, and we have to move in a new direction, which brings us to the opportunity tonight to make that vision a reality. In 1968, the current campus was constructed for 800 students. In the 1980s, space was added to allow 1,000 students to attend. In 2022, we're over 1,400. Our technical areas are maxed out. Our historical tradition of preparing students for the workforce is losing momentum because we no longer have the space necessary to expand content and to introduce the most state-of-the-art standards to our students. Our building is starting to fail, not because we don't maintain it, but rather because the life cycle of the materials used for construction has expired. The roof needs to be repaired. Mechanical systems are no longer efficient. Common areas are simply too small. Windows and doors need to be replaced. We've managed to push forward even with all these mounting concerns, but we've reached a critical mass. If Diamond Regional is going to continue to be a producer of skilled workers for the local labor market, we have to do something. And at this time, our local beliefs are echoed by the folks across the Commonwealth. The state is willing to assist in our push to improve technical education. This push will allow us to continue to support the students and the industries of Greater Fall River. As the current workforce continues to age and retire, the next generation needs to be prepared to fill those gaps. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us, a chance to promote excellence in our region, a chance to ensure continuity in the local labor market and the economy. Over 15,000 students have graduated from Diamond Regional. Many of those have become business owners in this city, contributors to the economic success of this region. This is a chance to keep that tradition alive, a chance to ensure our region is prepared for whatever the future brings, a chance to move our region forward and make it a better place for our children and grandchildren. We're just starting to come out of one of the worst times in modern history, a time where trades were taxed to the highest degree, job openings never seen before, but no skilled labor to meet the demand. How do we prevent that from happening again? What steps do we have to make to ensure our economy doesn't have to waffle through this again? How do you ensure we have enough nurses, machinists, technicians, contractors, plumbers, and electricians to move forward? The answer at this time is right in front of us. I know many people are going to challenge you with the question on how we can afford to do this. From our point of view, the more important question is, what happens if we don't? Are we better off letting this chance pass by, or are we better off finding ways that allow us to grab it while it's in front of us? Can we allow this chance to slip through our fingers, knowing that it may never come back around? We all agree that the students deserve the best. You've shown that in your actions over the years. We ask you to show that one more time. Now, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Greg Joint from Castle Booze, who is going to present to you our MSBA story.
Thank you, Dr. Ferrer. So I'll run briefly through our presentation to give you some background history on the MSBA process, the conditions at the school, and then the proposed project and solution that we've come to through the course of the study. So obviously, four member communities, and we've talked about the percentages of Fall River students at Diamond is 76.5%. It says on there. Not very visible there. And just a note that Diamond does an enormous amount of community-based projects throughout the member district communities, but primarily here in the city. I think I got a list of 15 to 20 different projects that they've done for the utility commission over the past decade, it seems, working on projects to help the city eliminate some front costs and maybe do projects that weren't necessarily achievable otherwise. And just, the MSBA invites projects into the pipeline for a number of reasons. A lot of them are outlined on the slide. I know it's a little small on the screen, but really, the main reason that Diamond is in the pipeline, as Dr. Ferrer has stated, is that the building is really at the end of its usable life. Once a building reaches beyond 50 years, that is really, you know, the most it's designed to, you know, function for. And beyond that, you have to either significantly renovate the building or replace the building. So maintenance isn't really something that would keep up with that. In fact, Diamond was awarded some kind of extra points in the MSBA process for their maintenance procedures. So the state does certainly take a look at those maintenance procedures, and if a district does a good job over its history, they're rewarded for that in their reimbursement rate. So just going back, 54-year-old building, you know, 219,000 square feet originally for 800 students. The building currently is at about 235,000 square feet for 1,400 students. When we compare that to what we would expect for a modern facility with the traditional or the current space standards outlined by the state, we're about 160,000 square feet short of where the building really should be. So that really leads us to the problem of how to rectify that on this site. So, you know, the existing conditions of the building, obviously, they have all the existing issues that a 50-year-old building would. Things like, you know, issues with the exterior masonry, failed, you know, exterior concrete that's been there for 50 years, a roof that really has been repaired throughout the years, but is a very difficult roof to maintain and really needs to be replaced in whole. And with that, the deck during the original construction was a port-in-place gypsum deck, so the same thing your drywall's made out of is the structure of the deck. So obviously, as the roof ages and has leaks, that gypsum deck is degraded. So that requires a lot of extra work that you wouldn't normally see on just a regular roof replacement on a more modern building with a steel, you know, metal roof. Again, you know, other issues around the building, but primarily, you know, aging facilities and lack of space are the big reasons why this project was invited into the pipeline for the MSBA. Again, the building is of an age where it is, has asbestos in it, so that asbestos is in the form mostly of spray-on fireproofing, which, while contained in closed areas, is safe and inert. When you go to renovate or maintain this building, it takes a significant amount of abatement work in those areas to rectify that and abate that before any real, you know, improvements can take place. So annually, Diamond has been spending between $100,000 and $250,000 out of their budget annually to deal with these abatement issues before they can go in and do maintenance and improvement work, just to kind of stay on track with where they're going. You know, we are estimating that there's about $6.8 million of abatement still to go in this building, which is a very significant amount of abatement. This building has a lot of asbestos in what is now safe spaces, but as you go in and touch those, obviously, they have to be abated in a very strategic and proper way. Also, with this building, you know, we have a site. The district agreement has, the building has to be located within a four-mile radius of the traffic circle on Eastern Ave, so obviously, another site really isn't available. I think you found the same when looking at the Diamond, the Durfee project. You know, the available sites within the city aren't abundant, and so this existing site is really the option for the district. This site does have some challenges. It's a steeply sloping site. I think we dropped about 92 feet from one corner to the other, and it is primarily, once you get six to eight feet down under the dirt ledge in most places, and off on the football and baseball fields, there is a little bit of fill that is kind of, seems to be offcuttings from one of the highway projects in town. So through the process, we looked at three different enrollments, 1,400 students, 1,500 students, and 1,645 students. Diamond's currently about 1,450 students, so 1,500 was chosen. It's probably the closest to the current enrollment, and it also controls that cost. As you roll up in student enrollment, obviously, the costs increase. So balancing kind of the regional needs with the new Durfee and the other member towns, the 1,500 student population was selected. We looked at, so if you total all the options up with all the enrollments, 28 different options, including option one, which is a base repair. So in this case, a base repair really isn't a feasible option. What it's there to do is to use as a comparison for other options, so that you know if you do nothing essentially, what cost will be incurred, you know, if a project doesn't go through. So those all are estimated by a professional cost estimator based on our assessments of the existing building and our preliminary designs. The design that was ultimately chosen was a new construction project located on the football field behind the current building or in front, if you are at the front door, but anyway, different story. So that is the most economical solution. It is the shortest construction duration, and those two tie together, and it is the most compact footprint, just because of the way we're able to organize the building vertically, instead of kind of sprawling out like a lot of vocational technical high schools do. So, you know, a couple of things that the building had to do in the design, I think the most important is create an educationally appropriate, fiscally responsible, long-term solution. I think, you know, I can speak for us as consultants, the building committee was very clear on their desire to have both an educationally feasible but a fiscally feasible project. So everything that we did throughout the design process was focused on not only meeting educational needs for kind of Industry 4.0, 21st century learning, and all the needs of the students, but also making sure that we were being cautious with how we spent money and where we invested the money throughout the project. So just to kind of orient people on the screen, so Stonehaven Road would be at the bottom of the site plan you see here, and so the building kind of flips, the football field moves up to where the existing building would be, sorry, multi-purpose field, not football field, and the building goes down onto the current multi-purpose field and track. Those are rebuilt. A significant improvement in this scheme is the traffic pattern of the site. The site now has a pretty overlapping traffic pattern, which causes a lot of issues, not only within the site but in the neighborhood, and this also increases parking significantly to kind of eliminate the on-street parking that often happens in that neighborhood with, you know, district cars. So a couple of views of the building from Stonehaven Road. This is at the other corner of the entries. All of the entries basically stay in the same locations that they are now. A view of the front entry, a view within the, we call it student commons, but the cafeteria, and one of the academic corridors, and we'll just play a brief video for the entry sequence And so to outline the schedule for the project, the schedule has been going on since 2020, and we've gone through a long process of making sure that we get the program, the building, and the site all right, to make sure that we get that accurately estimated and presented in the budget. So we are at the time when it's back to the district after MSBA board approval for district approval. Once the district approval is completed, if it is passed, the project funding agreement will be ratified with the district and the MSBA. We would go into design, development, and construction documents, so kind of the last two-thirds of the design process, and then ultimately, that would wrap up in 2023, and construction would start in 2023, '24, and go through 2026 for the building, and then another year for demolition and kind of the finishing of the site components of the project. So enrollment, we've talked about 1,500 students. The total building square footage is 394,650, and the total project cost is 293,500. The MSBA base reimbursement rate, maybe it's the wrong way to say it, but the reimbursement rate for the district is 79... is seventy-nine point seven-seven percent. Uh, that's a very good reimbursement rate. Their, their cap at MSBA is eighty percent. Uh, I think you're probably all fairly familiar with the MSBA process, having gone through it a number of times. Uh, and so, uh, that is for, you know, eligible costs, so ineligible costs, I think you're familiar with, construction cost over three hundred and sixty dollars a square foot is really the, the big, uh, ineligible cost, uh, that, that kind of gets you back down to, uh, an MSBA funding somewhere around fifty-one percent. That fifty-one percent obviously is still a significant number. It's a potential grant of up to a hundred and forty-eight point seven. Sure.
While you're on that.
Yep.
Can you explain the reimbursement to seventy-nine point seven-seven? Then you said in practicality, or you can use that term, uh, forty-nine?
Sure. So, um, the reimbursement rate is a base rate. Uh, it's a, it's a base rate with a, a number of adders to get you to a, a final district reimbursement rate. So there's, uh, incentives for green, you know, sustainable design, there's incentives, like I said, for maintenance and things like that, gets you to that seventy-nine point nine percent of eligible costs. There are, um, caveats to the MSBA's agreement, those are ineligible costs. So ineligible costs are construction cost over three hundred and sixty dollars a square foot. We are currently at six hundred and nineteen, six hundred and seventeen dollars a square foot for construction cost. So that delta between those are not, it's not reimbursable. Uh, so i- it's borne by the district. That's why you see a significant drop in that. There are other things, site costs over eight percent of cons- total construction cost, uh, and the like. So there, there's a number of things, but the, the big one is really the, the dollars per square foot on construction cost.
Everything within the core of the building is reimbursable, so.
No.
No.
No. Only up to a certain dollar amount does the state reimburse the seventy-nine point seven-seven. Anything over to three hundred and sixty per square, there is no reimbursement. Correct.
Dollars per square foot. Dollars per square foot, right. Dollars per square foot of construction cost currently is about six hundred and nineteen dollars a square foot. The MSBA cap, which just raised, I think Durfee, it was three thirty-three, I think, they just raised that to three hundred and sixty. Um, so, so that delta between three sixty and six nineteen is non-reimbursable. If that helps clarify. There's, there's some other things, but in percentage, they just aren't. No.
The reason I ask the question, I'll have, um, I'll continue under item two when we have, uh, our administration done. The issue for me is whether or not, uh, this has to go to the voters, and a recent memoir I received says the forty-nine percent, which means it has to go to the voters. Um, 'cause we have a city ordinance, as you, as you know, anything under fifty percent, under fifty-one percent, which means fifty percent. So we're talking about a one percent difference, whether the voters have to lay in on this or not. So, um, I'll reserve my questions later on for the administration.
Back to you.
You can continue.
So, uh, again, total project cost, uh, is there. Uh, potential grant, uh, so they say potential grant because there's a, there's a range in the grant between a hundred and forty, five, seven to a hundred and forty-eight, and, and that range i- it picks up, uh, the contingencies that are built into the project. Um, so, so as those contingencies are subject to the same eligibility requirements, uh, that, that is why there's a, a range. So that results in the district share between a hundred and forty-four point eight and a hundred and forty-seven million dollars, uh, depending on, you know, just how those, uh, lie. And just to remind you, the, the base repair that we estimated, that kind of don't improve anything, just bring everything up to code and repair what's breaking, uh, came in at a hundred and fifty-six to a hundred and sixty-one million. Uh, so, so the district share, uh, of the, of the new project ends up being slightly less in this case than a, a base repair that doesn't really fix the educational things, it just fixes the physical building things. It actually probably would result in less usable square footage as we incorporate, uh, you know, uh, code upgrades for accessibility and the like that would be required under a project like that. Uh, and I should note that the MSBA generally, uh, though I can't speak for them, uh, doesn't participate in projects that don't meet the educational need of the district. So, uh, just to break down, uh, the, uh, annual costs, uh, for For River, um, the annual, uh, ca- assessment from the district would be six point five million, uh, and, and these are estimated numbers based on Unibank's projections for a thirty-year bond at three and a half percent interest, uh, and that breaks down to about sixty-nine dollars per a hundred thousand dollars of value, uh, on the household. And so we were, uh, lucky, we were the third project of this, uh, size and scope, uh, in the pipeline for MSBA. Uh, two before us were Northeast Metro and Bristol Plymouth, uh, right down the road in time. So we were able to compare ourselves to those projects to see how we did, uh, I am accused of being a little bit too data-based and for an architect, but, um, you know, these numbers kind of let us know that we're probably on the right track. Uh, so the total cost per student, we are, are the lowest, um, and the square foot per student, we're right between the two. Uh, we, Northeast Metro benefits from having a, a, about a hundred more students, uh, with one or two less shops, so they get kind of a, a better square foot ratio, uh, for, for their process, but we're right in the middle where we should be, and in total project cost, uh, we are the lowest proj- uh, total project cost, uh, you know, under three hundred million, where Bristol Plymouth and Northeast Metro are both significantly above three hundred million dollars. I sho- I should mention that, uh, Northeast Metro has sixteen hundred students, I believe, and Bristol Plymouth is fourteen, I think they were fourteen thirty-five or something like that, so very, very comparable projects, uh, in a, I think, six-month window to each other, so very, very close timeframe, so, um, just a, uh, an approval would mean accepting the MSBA, uh, reimbursement. Uh, building a fifty-year solution, uh, might have stated that before, uh, these buildings are expected to be a, a fifty-year solution to the educational needs of the district. Uh, that doesn't mean you won't spend any money over those fifty years, but this, this project should last you through, uh, fifty-year duration of education. Uh, it addresses the overcrowding issues, uh, without being, uh, overbuilt. I think right-sizing the project, uh, was a very important, uh, aspect of this project and how we were able to control those costs to make sure we weren't higher than those other comparable projects. Uh, and it enables the school to develop kind of the next generation for, uh, the workforce in the area. Uh, all of these, uh, career areas were shaped on the, uh, state's, uh, regional workforce development needs. Uh, these things were taken into account, uh, by the district as they were looking at programs, making sure they validated the programs that they had, and, uh, they did add one program to the, um, uh, to the, the programs here, uh, for network and information systems. Uh, so that was, uh, a direct result of the, uh, local dis- the local workforce development needs. Uh, so, uh, a, a disapproval of the project, uh, declines, uh, the, the MSBA reimbursement. Uh, so once, uh, a, a project fails, it is out of the, uh, pipeline, uh, you would have to, uh, go back and start again. Uh, it's usually, I think it took you eight years to get in. Uh, the last project I seen that got in, it was about a five-year window before they got back into the, uh, pipeline and started over, uh, from the start. So it is a, a significant, uh, delay if a project, uh, does fail. It, it inevitably, the school will need renovations, things will fail, uh, that will need to be covered by operating costs and assessments to, uh, the sending communities, so, uh, that's a, a concern, uh, with this building, uh, in the, in the age that it is, it's just an inevitability that over time, things are going to fail that need to be replaced. Um, and it, it just, it doesn't address the overcrowding. I, I think if you've been to the school, you've seen probably the overcrowding, uh, it, it's a significant issue for the district. And that is, uh, the presentation. I will, uh, defer to members of the school committee.
Madam President.
Do you mind if, uh, Mr. Drunk would go back to the second slide of why?
Excuse me, councilor, we, I have several people, um, that have raised their hand to speak, but before we do that, do you have copies of this presentation for the council?
Uh, I do not have hard copies, sorry.
I, I have a hard copy I can leave.
Okay. The clerk will need that. And if anyone else wants it. Councilor, seat three, Councilor Vice President.
Good evening. Thank you for attending this evening. So we're looking at a two hundred and ninety-three million dollar project, um, leaving, uh, after the, after the state's reimbursement of one forty-eight seven, a hundred and forty-four point three. So For River's share would be approximately a hundred and ten million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, is that correct?
Of the principal, yes.
The principal.
We'd have to look into the interest over the thirty years as well, but on, on the principal.
Strictly the principal.
Yes.
Now, of that, you were, you were discussing, uh, square footage and the price for, for square footage. What portion of that is, do you believe is, will not be reimbursable?
Of the, of the square footage? Of the building?
Of that total number, uh, on that principal, uh, what, yes, 'cause you, 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 you indicated that because you're at six hun- six hundred dollars a square foot, a portion of this funding won't be reimbursable.
Correct. Anything over three sixty.
Right. Do we have any idea at this point, huh, what the effect is on that number?
So of the district share estimated, that is the district share. Oh, sorry. So that is the district share, which in- includes the, the non-reimbursable. That would be the cost to the district.
Right, right, the total cost.
Yeah.
But we don't know what of that number is gonna be, is that seventy-nine percent reimbursable? What's that forty-nine percent reimbursable? Or what portion of that is not reimbursable?
That includes all of the eligible and ineligible costs, so it, it, it is factored into the calculations. That ends us at that fifty-one percent blended rate, essentially. I, I don't know if I'm answering the question.
So I think for me, um, you know, I understand that we need the new diamond like we needed a new Durfee. I don't think any of this is an issue of whether we want it, need it, that it's not a question of, of whether we want or don't want state-of-the-art schools, especially in this day and age, you're correct. Um, in terms of the needs, um, with wind energy, et cetera, the trades are very, very important, probably more important than they've been for a very long time. I think the problem is we have an ordinance that does not allow this body to vote on something that's over five million dollars.
Can I ask a question? I think that's where we need clarification, 'cause I, I've been speaking to a couple of you, I, I think that has been the real struggle as to understanding the ordinance in the charter, who's borrowing the money? Is the city borrowing the money? Is it Diamond borrowing the money? And I, I think, do we, do we need, is the lawyer for the city here to ask the clarification on, on that? Okay. I think that's the, the question, right, that we're having is?
They'll be coming down, for item three will be the city administration.
Actually, for me, I, I'm a, I'm a proponent of ordinances, laws, et cetera. Um, I have always fought to stick by them, um, no matter what the situation is. And the bottom line, no matter who's cons- it's still the taxpayer that's paying. And if, as a taxpayer, I want the ability to vote on what I want to spend money on and how much I want to spend, and I don't think I, as a council, have the right to take that away from the taxpayer. So I'm just being honest with you. I, I read it as for what it is. Uh, we have an ordinance that we need to uphold. You know, there's a, there's a section of this that says, well, if you vote yes, it's still gonna go to the voters, maybe. That, 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 that's not good enough. We need, uh, definitive answers. I don't know where this is gonna go, but we definitely, I feel, have to abide by our ordinances. We will get the clarity and we will move on from there. Um, again, I don't want you to think I'm against the school, I absolutely am not against the school. You know, it's the right of everybody who lives here to determine what they want to pay for, what they don't want to pay for, what they can afford, and, you know, I, I can't tell somebody, I don't care that you don't have enough money, you have, you have to buy steak instead of hamburger. I can't do that, and with good conscience, I can't do that. So, uh, with that, I yield.
Thank you, councilor. Councilor in seat two, Councilor Kamara.
Thank you. Um, I only have one question at this moment. I am a proponent of Diamond, and if you cut before I was here and we can vote on it, I will vote for it. If it has to go to the voters, then so be it. But, uh, I, I think this is long overdue. I think, as you mentioned earlier, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's gonna be for the taxpayers. City got in trouble a long time ago when it didn't do the CSO project early enough, and it ended up costing a lot, lot more later on, affecting taxpayers. So we can have these conversations later on, we're addressing the finance, um, but one thing that I'm concerned about is the, um, the hazardous waste that's there, the abatement costs. I know you factored that number in, how, how much, what is that number that we're factored in so far for that abatement cost alone?
So, so total abatement cost on the complete demolition of the building is about six point eight million dollars in the estimate. Again, these are estimates, so.
Well, that's what scares me, I mean, how, who, did you have a company do it, or did you do it yourself?
Uh, no.
Was it a rough estimate?
These are, these are professional estimates. Uh, uh, one estimator is, uh, retained by the designer, another estimator is retained by the owner's project manager. Uh, they both do independent estimates on the documents, uh, and then we come together in a reconciliation meeting to make sure that, um, not necessarily that every line item matches.
Right.
Uh, but that, um, the, the scope is, is clear and, and defined in that the, uh, estimates were within a certain percentage of each other. I think we were within one or two percent, I think, and the, the numbers you see are, 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 are an averaged, uh...
That particular item in itself will have to go to bid, correct?
Uh, all items in the project will be, will be bid. Yes.
So I, I would hope that whoever bids that particular item there, that they would enter into an agreement where if it exceeds what their expectations are, they'd cover up the rest of it. They probably wouldn't want to do that. I can only tell you, and it was prior to me being on this council, but Councilor Pelletier, who probably remember the, uh, Hudner Hospital when it was sold to the city, I think they bought it for a dollar because they understood that there was some hazardous waste removal, and they had estimates, and this was a long time ago, prior to me being on the council. But they realized then that when they started getting rid of the hazardous material, that their costs were so high, they wanted to give the hospital back to the city. They couldn't afford just the removal of the hazardous material. I certainly understand the situation, and I'm sure those guys are professional and can come very close, but there's something that, only because you stressed how much asbestos there is throughout the entire building, there's a lot of it, and it's could be very, I mean, six million dollars doesn't seem like a lot of money to get rid of hazardous waste. I know it, some projects in Boston go for close to that, and they're not nearly as big as this, so I just want you to be very cautious.
Yeah, no, we, we, we were, uh, I'd say we, knowing, uh, the, the issues here, knowing what the school has had to address.
Okay.
Uh, and having done a very similar abatement project, uh, in a, a similar project in, um, Charlton.
Yeah.
Uh, Mass, Bay Path Regional, uh, did a renovation project for their school, had a very similar abatement scope, uh, and, and were able to handle that.
Right.
Uh, these numbers are, uh, as all early numbers are, are fairly conservative.
But I just, I think that's some one number that scares me, because once you stop doing it, there's no turning back, and you cannot stop doing it, and whatever the cost is, is what the cost is, and I think you want to get your hands around that one pretty, as close as possible.
Understood.
With that, I yield, thank you, and I'll save my comments for later on in finance.
Thank you. Councilor Kilby, you had your hand up. Did you have more for this, or are you waiting for administration? Thank you. Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Pereira.
Yeah, the only question that I had is I wanted to see the second slide that came, the second slide that came up, I believe it was the second slide, had why they were giving us the money, why, and there was a whole list of reasons.
There, there are a lot.
And to be honest with you, it, you know, it caught my eye, some of them, and I didn't realize that there was asbestos as much in that building. I mean, I knew it was built several years ago, I didn't realize that. And I mean, the concerning thing is, for me, is if we don't look at getting a new diamond, we're gonna look at spending a hundred and fifty million to a hundred and sixty-one million, and that is gonna come right out of our budget, because that's gonna be an assessment, very similar to what Bristol Aggie, uh, has given us for an assessment. But if you could just read those, 'cause I couldn't read everything that was there, and I think the public at home might, people watching might not know, if you could run by it.
Sure. So the, the building facility needs, severe overcrowding, approximately thirty percent of qualified applicants are turned away due to lack of space, prevention of severe overcrowding, uh, expected as a result of the increased enrollment, condition of the existing building infrastructure, lack of appropriate energy sources, lack of building code compliance, lack of energy conservation code compliance, lack of seismic structural code compliance, lack of modern technology infrastructure, lack of handicap accessibility, inadequate or inefficient or poor, poorly distributed building systems such as HVAC plumbing and electrical, lack of natural ventilation or outdated mechanical systems, lack of a sprinkler system, and asbestos located throughout the building were the build, the big factors for... were the big factors for the MSBA.
Okay.
So, that's structural. The other column is educational.
Yeah, but I was just looking at the structural, just so that people would know. And, you know, when I saw that there was some concern for ADA compliance, I know that when the school was first built, there weren't those laws in place. And, you know, I'm a big proponent for making sure that things are ADA compliant. And, you know, the sprinkler system, the chief of the fire department is here, so maybe he'll want to check that out. But we need to make sure that you have, you know, that you have a sprinkler that's working. My feelings on this, and I'll wait until Attorney Atkins comes down, but my feelings on this is, I believe we need a school. But I believe that if we are, you know, going to do, vote one way or another way, that it's going to come out of our budget. That's not going to happen. There's not enough money in the budget for a lump sum to come out. It has to go to the voters for approval. And nine of us here cannot make a decision for all of the residents of Fall River. And I would say, sooner than later, put in an order, whether the council does it or whether the mayor does it, and schedule a time, because I believe your timeline is for May 22nd?
May 20th, yes.
May 20th. So, schedule a special election and get it done. And I did talk to Mr. Iacapone relative to the cost of a special election is like $63,000. If we could use opera money to pay for that, because then it comes to who's going to pay for this. And by all intents and purposes, he's feeling that it can be paid through opera money. So, let's do it. We're not going to sit here and discuss this over and over at nauseam. I think we all know Diamond serves a purpose. It's a good school, and it needs, you know, look at around the communities. They're all putting in new schools with new technology, and you have to do it. If we don't have education, we don't have economic development. You know, you need to educate. But I think that it should absolutely be a vote of the people, and let people hear. This is what they do. Have a tour of the school, you know, show this presentation to people so that they get an understanding of it. And I would wait. We did get a timeline, and when Attorney Atkins comes up, there's a few questions I had. On the timeline, I worked with attorneys before, and when I see this likely could be or that likely could, I don't want to see likely. Tell me yes, no. So, hopefully, we'll get to that. But thank you so much for coming down, and I appreciate your presentation. With that, I yield, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Just, again, want to just reiterate some of the sentiments that were made as far as taking the vote away from the taxpayer. We vote on budgets. We vote on many things that the taxpayer does not get a chance to vote on. You know, we vote on sewer rates, water rates, things like that. When it came to the debt exclusion vote, that went to the taxpayers for Durfee. And I feel as though this is the same route it should go. I feel as though the people who are invested in the community, if they have this opportunity to make this vote, then they should. And I do appreciate the school. I appreciate Diamond's history. I mean, I'm a Durfee graduate, but I have millions of friends from Diamond, and I have an appreciation for the school, the program that you want to put together, the school that you want to put together out there personally. But what I want and what I feel the taxpayers can afford are very two different things. And I agree with the citizens' input that this is an investment in the community, and I have no argument against the value that this would bring to the community. However, at the end of the day, the people who pay for it have a chance to vote for this, and I want to give them that opportunity. So, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Padeen.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess, to no shock of anybody, I'm going to be on the opposite end of this whole conversation, because I just, I can never stay in the majority. I will say that, and this is not to be disrespectful of my colleagues, however, our form of government is that we have city councilors. So, to suggest that we're going to constantly, let's go back to the voters, let the voters decide. If that's what we want, we need to change our form of government and have a town meeting, an open town meeting, so that every single resident, and that's a voter, has the right to vote on every issue. The voters vote for us to make decisions. Now, that being said, we have ordinances, and I fully support making sure that we follow and abide by what we've approved in ordinances. So, if it requires us to go to a ballot question, then I would support that if it's over the, if it's less than the 51% reimbursement coming from the state. If it is not, I don't think we should circumvent what our authority is, that the voters instilled in us. We just need to make an educated decision, and we need to stand behind the vote that we take, good, bad, or indifferent. Because I will say, you run the risk. It's not just Diamond. Every year, we vote on whether or not we're going out for debt. So, does that mean every time we go out for debt, we're going to have the voters, you know, take a vote to say, "Do we support this? Do we not support this?" Or are we going to say, "No, you know what? Just because it's only $2 million, it doesn't really impact the voters." Every bond authorization that we put out impacts the voters. So, I'm just on the opposite side. I think we just need to have a conversation. I support Diamond, just like I supported Durfee. I do not support Diamond going to the debt exclusion. I do not support Durfee going to the debt exclusion. When we start talking about raising taxes, the taxpayers already pay 2.5%. We need to manage our budget and make sure that the priorities align with what we want to see in our operating budget. So, that means if we need to reallocate funds and reallocate monies to different priorities, then that's our responsibility, and that needs to come down from the administration. But we need to be clear about that. And I've got some questions with regard to retiring debt, because there is retiring debt. We just had a debt projection that came in, and we're starting to see that there's retirement debt. We've got a document here. We've also got additional monies that's coming in from a debt exclusion, which is going to offset this. So, I think when we start looking just at the general funds, city, and school, we got principal and interest starting in 2023 at 12.8 million, going down to 12.7, going down to 12.5, 12 million, 11, 10, 10, 7, 7, 6, 5, 5. So, there's retiring debt. What's not captured in here is that there's also an estimated of $5 million coming in in additional revenues for the debt exclusion that the taxpayers are paying for. So, right off the bat, we've got a minus $5 million off of this. We've internally had said that we want to see at least $10 million in our debt line item. So, if I look at $12 million and minus $5 million, that's $7 million. So, we've got enough to support our costs for Diamond. Now, it's just a matter of whether or not we truly want to support that. And I'll go on, and we'll have this conversation, because I think the conversation needs to be had. But more importantly, the reason I support Durfee is I was on the school committee, I was on the school committee when we started going through all these brand-new schools under the Lambert administration. There is not a school in the city of Fall River on the public side that has not seen a new building, with the exception of Diamond. Okay? We can't lose sight of the fact that 76% of the students that go to Diamond are Fall River students. We owe it to Fall River students, if we support education, to support Diamond. Now, we can ask the difficult questions as to whether or not we think the cost associated with the building is legitimate, but I think, in all fairness, if we're going to support Durfee, we're going to support, you know, the Spencer Boarding, we're going to support the Green School, we're going to support the Slade School, we're going to support the Laternal School, we're going to support the Sylvia School, and the list goes on, how do you not support the Diamond School? Diamond came before us two, three years ago, four years ago, with a statement of interest before this project even went forward to see whether or not this city council supported this project. And I know it was a different makeup, but this city council, not this particular makeup, but the city council voted to support the project. We sent the Diamond School District forward with the support from the city council to say, "Yes, we support this project, and we will support it in the future." That's how they went through and even got their application heard from the MSBA. So, to come back now in the 10th hour, when everything's ready and all this money has been expended and the time and energy, to say, "Now, we're not going to support it," to me is not where I personally want to stand. So, I will say, wholeheartedly, that I support this. I do not support, and I want to be very clear, I do not support a debt exclusion, because I think we should be able to live within the means that we have. We've already did a debt exclusion for Durfee. Like I said, I did not support. That being said, I've got some specific questions, because I think my colleague in seat two brings up some very good points in terms of comparing this to the CSO project, putting things off. So, when we go back to, when you went back to slide two, just to have, if we decide that, or if the voters, I think eventually, by the sounds of it, it looked like, it looks like it may go to the voters, so if the voters do not support a new building, we go to the renovation. You've obviously got to regroup, do everything. What is the inflation factor that you have in terms of this project? What does that look like?
That's a really easy question to answer. It's a very difficult question to answer. So, what I can tell you is kind of timeline costs based on MSBA projects, because that is probably the most solid data that we have. So, I went back and did a little bit of research to see kind of comparing average costs. Now, these are going to be for new construction projects, not base renovation projects, so the total dollars will be different, but construction cost tends to raise and lower the same percentage. So, over the last, so if you take a look at between 2015 and 2020, the average cost increase between projects in that time period for all MSBA new construction projects was about 33%. So, dollars per square foot raised about 33% in that timeline. I will note that in that timeline, MSBA's contribution only raised about $3 a square foot, so I'm not going to try to do the math on the spot, but it didn't keep up with that escalation. If you take a longer view of those increases between 2010 and 2020, the MSBA average project cost increase was about 57%. So, obviously, these increases are compounding. When we estimate these projects, I can't remember exactly what the percentage we used in this one was for our escalation. We estimate from the time of estimate to the midpoint of construction, because that's how you average out the construction estimate. And we average, I think on this one, it was between 4% and 4.5% a year, compounding over, you know, those years to the midpoint of construction. So, it certainly escalates. I think the other two important factors to take into account is, you know, if the project was eligible for MSBA funding, which it likely would not, we are at the front of the window of that raise to $360 a square foot. So, as you project forward, the MSBA raises that on kind of their own schedule, and that increase usually reflects about a 3% escalation when they do raise it. So, the longer you go into that, you know, that plateau, the bigger the delta is between the MSBA share and the district cost, if the project was able, you know, to be done. That said, design for a project like that is about a year. It's about the same design period, you know, so, you know, in theory, you could regroup and start and go. Probably puts you another year behind schedule, something like that, so, you know...
But you still don't gain the efficiencies that you're looking for and the added educational value that you're going to get in this new building.
No.
Right?
And as you renovate, right, you trigger code-required upgrades. Accessibility is a big one. So, as you have to go into the building and make things accessible, you actually lose usable square footage, right? A non-accessible bathroom is a lot smaller than an accessible bathroom, right? And so, almost none of the bathrooms at Diamond are accessible, right? They have some to comply with the renovation requirements that they have over time, but, you know, in a major renovation project like the base repair option, all of those bathrooms would have to accommodate accessible requirements, gets them much bigger, which takes away from other usable space, which we already know they lack. So, ultimately, it, you know, it ends up kind of having a detrimental effect to the educational purposes, just to meet the code requirements.
And that's also assuming it's a quick turnaround. If we can't get this project approved and we look at a base repair, we have to get MSBA to approve that again. The average length of time is somewhere between three and seven years now for a system that gets rejected, gets back into the pool, and then gets back into line. Realistically, this project in seven years could cost us $400 million.
So, that number that you presented in slide two with just the, I guess, the renovation, does that include any FFNE, or is that solely just building renovations? So, you're not gaining any new technology or any educational value?
That's basically taking our current footprint, bringing it up to code, and as Greg mentioned, potentially losing some educational space to make sure everything that we're doing is up to code.
So, in terms of, for those folks that are extremely concerned, and I'm one counselor as well, for the taxpayer and the value that the taxpayer dollars are going to be used for, it's minimal, right? You're just fixing a building. You're not getting any new added value for education. It's solely just the envelope of the building and bringing it up to code.
Correct. And we would also have to pay close attention to enrollment capabilities once those changes are made. Right now, we're managing with 1,400 and some. As you start to potentially take away from academic classrooms or technical areas, that could impact the enrollment number moving forward, because those areas could not sustain potentially the current numbers they have.
And I should note that a renovation of that sort, the life expectancy for the renovation would be a 30-year life expectancy, as it is on the MSBA's renovation option projects, as opposed to a 50-year life expectancy of a new building project. So, there is a significant difference in life expectancy of those type of projects.
And then, in terms of the new construction projects, the FFNE, is there new equipment coming in there? So, that would be fully functional with new vocational equipment? Do you know how much of that is budgeted roughly?
So, let me just clarify. So, there is FFNE, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment that has a line item of, I think it's...
1.8.
1.8 million. There's a technology line item for another 1.8. And there is also some vocational or in technical career area equipment that is associated with the construction cost. So, things like kitchen equipment associated with the new commercial kitchen for the culinary arts is not in that FFNE line item, because it is so integral to the construction of the project. That is included in the construction cost. And off the top of my head, I think there's about $2.5 million. I will say that of technical schools that we have worked on, Diamond is very well-equipped in terms of equipment. They have done an excellent job managing Perkins grant funds, the capital skills grants over the course of the years that they've been available, and they've been fairly successful at those capital skills grants. So, in terms of career and technical equipment, there isn't a huge amount in there. There's a lot of really great stuff that they have that can come over. So, that is, you know, it's hard to say it's a cost savings, but you don't have to reinvest in a ton of new equipment to supplement kind of old and aging equipment. They've gone through the process on a lot of their equipment and, you know, replaced it over the years and maintained what they have in very good stead. So, that is a significant benefit to the project, because you don't have to spend, you know, 10 to 18 million trying to fit out these new areas.
And then, for those people, you know, those folks that are looking at this and trying to compare it to Durfee, do you have just, and maybe you don't have this answer, but just a rough idea of, you know, the difference or the cost increase just for a vocational school versus a typical high school?
Yeah, it's about 1.25. Comprehensive high school versus a voc-tech high school, the voc-tech's about 1.25.
Okay. All right. More. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. And like I said, I know I might not be taking the populist stance. I'm ready to support this now and tell you folks to move forward with it, because, you know, quite frankly, it's just, if we're really concerned about the taxpayer value and looking out for the taxpayers, I think now's the time to move on this. You know, interest rates are low. I think, you know, when you're talking about inflation of 33% and then comparing it to just doing a cost-benefit analysis to a renovation, and I think this, at the end of the day, this is about education. And I know people often say, "Buildings don't teach students." I would agree with that. Unfortunately, in this event, this will allow you to help better provide additional education to students by better space, more efficiencies gained because of the space and equipment that you're able to do. And I think that, you know, number one makes the city of Fall River better off, and quite frankly, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, if we can, you know, keep these folks and, you know, these students in Massachusetts with their skill set. And I know some folks go, you know, some of those students go on to college and things of that nature, but I think that all, you know, kind of adds to the marketability of folks and people trying to create and start their own business. I see, you know, Mr. Hetzler in the audience, and I know, just having a conversation with him, and I hope he doesn't mind me sharing this, but we had a conversation and we had that discussion from the political standpoint of where folks feel that Diamond is just taken taken away from students, because they shouldn't be going to college. And, you know, I personally, for one, don't, don't feel that elected officials should be dictating what the educational path is for students. I think we should be providing and offering up, you know, the vehicle for them to make that, their decision and, and decide where they're going to take them. And, and quite frankly, how many times do we, do we see students go to college not knowing what their degree is going to be, right? We can't expect, you know, students who are going into high school to know right off the bat, this is where I want to go, but it gives them the technical aspects in the event that they decide they don't want to go to college. And if they do want to go to college, they just, again, have that, you know, that technical aspect. And, and when I was discussing with Mr. Hetzler, he, he went to Diamond and then decided he wanted to go to college, and, and it helped him broaden his, his horizons and, and expand his, his abilities. And, and he's now, you know, a very successful businessman in the, in the community and, has offed up. He's, you know, we served together on the, on the CUS Building Committee, so he's been very active in, in education, not just with Diamond, but across the, across the city. And, and right now, when we start looking at the hiring process, trying to, to, you know, get people in the, in the trades, whether it's plumbers or electricians, it, it is a very difficult thing to do right now. And I think if we can kind of force that and, and get people more interested in trying to get the technical aspects, I, I think it's going to be better for everybody in the long run. I, I think some of those technical licenses are going to be, you know, a license to, to print money if, if, you know, these students realize, you know, the demands and, and the need that's out there. So, again, I, I support this. I know I'm a little bit long-winded, but I, I support Diamond moving forward, and, and to me, it's a no-brainer. I yield.
Councillors have anything further on the presentation? Councillor in seat six, Councilwoman.
Got the number right?
It's because it's right there.
Thank you for coming down, Father, and Maynard, and everybody else. I called you up today, my friend, and put you here tonight, so that's good. You know, I feel, you know, we built eleven, twelve schools. I, I lost track. And all of it was monies that was reimbursed to the city of Fall River, some as high as maybe seventy-five, eighty percent. As we went along for the other schools, probably fifty percent, whatever. But you got the, the Durfee going up, so be it. We had to get a vote for that. Whether or not, we're going to see what's going to happen. You people have been working on this for, for a while. It takes what, five, six years before you put this together, the package?
We're in year ten.
You're in year ten?
Yes.
Well, just think about it, the people. It'd take ten years to get where we are now. We certainly don't want to start over. I mean, we, we got to do the right thing if we're getting a hundred and ten million. Let's do what we have to do to get it done. And a completion on this, what'd you say, two, twenty-six?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, we would be completed.
And there you go. If you have to start over, I mean, you say you're going to spend a hundred and forty million to take care of the old school. It's ridiculous. It's crazy. You're just throwing money away. You got all the horses and, and the rights stable. Let's go. Let's get it done. You know, being here for a while, I've been to a few graduations, some of my families, and some of my kids have done good, because going to school. Not everybody can go to school and learn, and they drop out because they can't take it, but we have something special in Fall River that you can learn a trade in Fall River and get a job anywhere. But if you go to Diamond, you get two choices. You got to trade, or you get an education, and you can move on if you're really, really smart to college and do what you want. If not, you can do something else. Or be a plumber, a baker, a cook, a nurse, an electrician. I missed a boat, but it's all right. I'm a politician, so it's all right. I didn't go to Diamond, but that's okay. But it's an opportunity. I know the people out there are going to say, wow, this is crazy. More money. More money. But the effort that you put in for the last six, seven years, you know, I, I support it. I have no problem. No problem whatsoever. I mean, but, you know, it's close. You know, if we don't do it, it's, do you start over? How can you start over? You've been six, seven years at it. You're going to start again? Come on. Everybody on the table is getting old. You didn't follow me. But, no, you don't say no. But I think it's the right thing to do. We got to sharpen our pencils and see what we can do. I support it, and I wouldn't want to start over. And just bringing up that piece of property that we, I sold to Housing and Tuesday Clinic. And that thing, they wanted me to get two hundred and fifty thousand for it. I said, you can't get two hundred and fifty thousand, you're going to clean it up. So, we sold it for twenty-five thousand, split between the housing at Druzeale. Well, you see the building they put up there? Beautiful building, you know, and Housing took the rest of the land. But it was the thing at the meeting, I told them, many times, you take it as is for twenty-five thousand. Twenty-five thousand, that's the deal. That's, you can get more money, Leo. No, let's get twenty-five. They all agreed, twenty-five thousand. And maybe about nine months later, they started the project. They spent half a million dollars. There's one tank they didn't know about. They found the tank and had to take it out. So, I'm hoping that you guys wouldn't have a problem like that. But they come back on us, and they want us, you know, they want their money back. And you agree to it, that's it. You own it, do what you got to do. They still put a new building up. I'm just hoping that you don't have that kind of a problem at that property. Now, the fixed price, if we start now, you think it's going to overrun? You know, you're going to twenty-twenty-six, right?
Our, our job is to make sure it doesn't go over budget.
How do you do that?
We, we have a committee that's put together to make sure all the points that we've gone through over the past two years stay where they need to be. We, we understand what it is. We do our very best to make sure we, we don't miss by an extraordinary amount. If you look at the, the history of the, the projects, and I think Greg can speak to this, with vocational schools over the past several years, they've either been on point or slightly under point, and we would look to follow that same model.
Well, that's good to know, reinforcement. All right, with that, I yield, I, I support it, and whatever I can do to make it work, you know, it's got a little more time on the council, but whatever I can do, you let me know. If we can work together, we should get it done. We get it done. I mean, you know, it's one more school, and it's got to be done. It's imperative. Now, all the other communities have said, okay. They all said, okay. So, it's just us.
To date, we have.
Big guys.
Right. To date, we have, we have not received any disapproval from any of the three towns.
Yeah. All right, man, I'm chairman, I, President. Are you?
Anything further before I go back to councillor in seat two? Councillor Kamara?
Just real quick, I just want to wrap it up again. I thought I made myself clear, saying I would support it if it came before us, and if it has to go to the voters, it has to go to the voters. But I hope that it would come before us, so that we can just support it and do what is right. Right now, the reimbursement is eighty-nine point eight percent, I think.
Seventy-nine point seven seven.
So, it's almost eighty percent. There's no guarantee what the reimbursement is going to be if we delay this and if the voters turn it down. And then, if they have to build a school five, six, seven, eight, nine years from now, that reimbursement could be sixty percent, because it's declined. We started, we started building schools. I think I voted for every single school when I was on this council, starting in nineteen ninety-seven, and the reimbursement started out at ninety percent. There weren't too many communities taking advantage of the ninety percent reimbursement, and as they saw, we, we did two in one year, we did two two years later, we did another two, three years after that. And as other communities started to get aware of the reimbursement program, and they saw what the city of Fall River was doing by building new schools and getting that amount of money reimbursement, saving our taxpayers an awful lot of money, they started to do the same thing, and the reimbursement started to dwindle and get less and less. And I think Durfee was one of the last buildings we built, and it was one of the lowest reimbursements back of all the schools we built. I certainly don't want Diamond to lose out on the opportunity to build their school at seventy-eight point eight percent, which is a very good percentage. So, we should do everything we can to get their school built at that percentage and give these people what they deserve. It's a long, past overdue. They do a phenomenal job with what they have now. Just imagine what they could do if they had new state-of-the-art facility with new equipment and new things to go in there. So, with that, I yield, and good luck, guys. Start those signs, start the campaigns, don't be afraid. Do everything that we have to do to build Durfee. Make sure people are well-aware of what the needs are and why, and what the costs will be. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor in seat three, Councillor Vice President, Dean.
How many trades are taught at Diamond presently?
Currently, we have eighteen. The project adds one to nineteen.
Adds one?
Yes.
And what field is that in?
Internet and network security.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I yield.
Anything further from the council? Councillor CD, Councillor Posen?
Doctor Farah, two questions. It's my understanding that the district is prepared, if it's a no-vote here, they're prepared to pay for the election that will happen between the four cities and towns? Is that correct?
So, so currently, we're utilizing the, the section of the law that has us go to the municipalities, it's seventy-one sixteen D. If there is a disapproval, because our regional agreement requires unanimous vote from all four sending communities, the Diamond School Committee will, will have the ability to look at a second section of the law, seventy-one sixteen N, which would allow us as a district to hold a regional referendum vote. And, and Diamond would be responsible for the cost of that vote, yes.
And what does that look like, as far as functionality is concerned?
So, we would be collaborating with all four sending communities to make sure every voter had opportunity to get to a, a polling station. We'd have to work out a timeframe. We'd have to work out locations. We, we work collaboratively with each four sending communities to make sure that there are no barriers put up to, to voters. We would agree on a date and times. Every community would have the same date, same times, identify locations, we, we run the, the ballot, and it's a fifty-one percent majority vote at that point.
That'll yield, thank you.
Thank you. Doctor Farah? Is that just a simple yes or no? Yes, you're in favor, and no, you're not in favor of Diamond? It's nothing to do with funding, correct?
Correct. It's just approval of the project.
Thank you. Councillor in seat four, Councillor Karama?
I'm sorry to prolong this, however, it's, it's important stuff. So, just so the viewers know what's going on, and obviously, many don't, many viewers watching the meeting, if we take no action tonight, it passes.
You, you have, based on our last school committee vote, the sending communities have until May twentieth to take disapproval action.
Okay, so if we take no action up until that date?
Defaults to a yes.
It's all set.
Correct.
If we deny or reject, then it goes to the ballot, the Diamond pays for that, and it goes to all the involved communities for an election?
If, if Fall River disapproves, the project stops under seventy-one sixteen D. The, the Greater Fall River Vocational School Committee then takes up the question of if they want to pursue seventy-one sixteen N and run a referendum vote.
You, you guys would, ladies and gentlemen. So, I would definitely be against that. I don't think this council has any right or jurisdiction to intrude on another elected body's or town's sovereignty, so to speak. So, if we approve, if we approve, it may or may not have to go to the voters.
No.
In Fall River only.
No.
My, so, again, if we take no action before the deadline, it passes.
Yes.
If we reject, then Diamond has the ability, the committee or it has the ability to put it on the ballot. You incur the cost for the ballot for, for the election for all the involved communities.
Correct.
If we approve, then our city ordinance may kick in. Our city ordinance may kick in, because of the reimbursement may be under fifty percent.
Ah, that, that question I can't answer.
Okay. Well, I think, just, I know Councillor Kamara and Councillor Kadeem, all three of us have been on the school committee. I was on for ten years, Attorney Brilliant, who's here. We definitely, I think this entire council, and it's been said by all, are firmly, firmly in support of this project, absolutely. My daughter graduated from Diamond, and she went on to college. She graduated with a four-year degree from college and is utilizing her skill that she learned from Diamond. So, the question, I think, is there's no, really no division in terms of us wanting this school built, but it's whether or not, as Councillor Dan quite eloquently said, whether or not we feel that the voters should have a say. So, I, I just found it ironic that if we, when I was reading that legislation, if we take no action, it's automatically approved. And I, I found that somewhat odd, I must say.
And just, just for full transparency, that's an MSBA regulation, that's not a Diamond regulation.
I get it, I get it. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to prolong your time, gentlemen.
Is there anything further on the presentation from the council? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd make sure Madam Clerk gets a copy of the presentation. Item three on the agenda is the Greater Fall River Vocational School District Committee, the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-three-million-four-hundred-seventy-two-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty dollars for design, engineer, constructing, and equipping the new Diamond Regional Vocational Technical High School and related athletic facilities. We have the members of the administration come down to the table, please. Attorney Aiken, I know you had forwarded a, a sheet of facts and a timeline, if you'd like to give a summary to the council.
Sure. So, not going to be labor. A lot of what's already been said tonight, it seems fairly clear that the council has a very clear idea of what it is in terms of numbers and the possibility of a vote, and who would sustain the cost of administering that vote. I'm just going to briefly run through what the process, as the administration understands it is. So, we have a estimated total cost of a new high school of two-hundred-and-ninety-three million dollars, with a contribution from the Massachusetts School Building Authority of a hundred-and-forty-five-point-seven million, which, as I do the math, is approximately forty-nine percent of the total cost, which means that the remaining cost is a hundred-and-forty-seven-point-three million, and, which is approximately fifty-one percent. Shared between the four Diamond communities, seventy-six percent of that remaining cost would be the responsibility of the city of Fall River, leaving the city with approximately a hundred-and-eleven-point-nine million dollars that they would be responsible for the cost of the project. The position of the, of the administration is that we take no position on whether or not the vote should go one way or the other, but rather, that the process, as we understand it, is that no action on the part of this council is tantamount to an approval. If, in fact, the numbers are as they have been represented to be, where the contribution from the state is less than fifty-one percent, forty-nine percent, then it would trigger any approval, whether it's approval by inaction or approval by vote of this council. Would trigger our ordinance, which is Section two dash one thirty-one. And the language of that ordinance is no order authorizing the issuance of a bond, note, or certificate of indebtedness of five million dollars or in excess of twenty million dollars in a fiscal year shall be effective but by a vote of the registered voters of the city of Fall River. So, the way I understand that is that even though it is the Diamond School Committee who would actually be incurring the debt from whoever they are borrowing from, any vote of the council approving it could arguably, if one were, I don't know, a lawyer and inclined to argue about these kind of things, one would suggest that any approval by this council would essentially be an order approving the issuance of indebtedness, something that would, that would represent indebtedness. Now, whether that is a, an IOU to the Diamond School Committee, or whether that is, well, our agreement to bond the project, or go to the voters and look for a debt exclusion, or try to do it within our means, as Councillor Kadeem talked about, whatever that looks like, it is still. whatever that looks like, it is still an obligation, a debt to the Diamond School Committee, which would essentially repay the debt that they themselves have incurred for the entirety of the project, split, of course, between the four communities, seventy-six percent of that being ours. So the little summary that I gave just goes through those numbers and goes through the two scenarios where the administration's reading of two dash one thirty-one, our city ordinance, suggests that this would go to a vote of the registered Fall River voters, which would essentially make the vote effective. So it's not that the city council can't vote on this. It's that the city council's vote is essentially ratified or made effective by a vote of the voters of the city. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Not my job to tell people what.
Councilor in seat four, Councilor Kilby?
I'll yield for now, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Ferro?
Thank you. But Attorney Aitken, when I got the memo that you sent, or the timeline, it said that if the council approves the project, the approval is likely, is likely only effective if it is then ratified by a citywide ballot. So if we vote yes, then this triggers to go to an election?
That's my sense of it. Now, when you're dealing with numbers this big, one of the conversations I had with the architect, who was just before you moments ago, and conversations I've had with Attorney Brilliant, have led me to believe that there is some potential movement in that contribution from the state. And there's maybe an argument that what we're looking at is a fifty percent or fifty and a half percent contribution, as opposed to forty-nine percent. Could it get up to fifty-one percent? I suppose. So I think that one of the issues here, and the reason I said likely, well, there's two reasons I said likely. One, is that in my professional life, I hedge almost everything that I say, because Attorney Brilliant will tell you, lawyers never want to be held, you know, exactly responsible for saying yes or no.
I saw the word likely twice.
So likely, we put in there two times, yep. It's one of my favorites. The, but the other reason is that I am aware that most of the numbers that have been used up to this point have been, you know, they've sort of rounded off, you know, after the first, you know, hundred thousand, thereabouts, right? And so knowing exactly what that is, whether that's forty-nine percent, whether it's fifty percent, whether we're edging closer to fifty-one percent, that could change what my opinion is of whether or not the ordinance is triggered. If it is, in fact, less than fifty-one percent, even by the smallest margin, I would say it should go to the voters under two dash one thirty-one.
Okay. So it's one-hundred-and-eleven-point-nine million over the length of the bond. How long are we going, thirty years?
That's what they recommend.
On this, is that what, so what would that be per year?
So there's been some numbers thrown around suggesting that the one-hundred-and-eleven-point-nine million would be six and a half million per year, or if you want to look at assessed value per hundred thousand dollars, or per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, it would be sixty-nine dollars per hundred thousand. So a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home would be just under, what, two-hundred-and-ten dollars?
And that would be going with a debt exclusion?
That's right. That would be going with a debt exclusion.
Correct. Now, Mr. Iacapone, when we look at the debt that is coming off, and there was a projection sheet here of the debt that's coming off, and they're not going to be online, and we're not going to stop paying this till, what, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven?
Yeah, probably. I mean, based on their construction schedule.
Would we be able to absorb into our budget the six-point-five million without it going to debt exclusion? What's your honest opinion on that?
Well, first of all, let me, the debt schedule.
And I don't know if you have that information right now.
Not really. And why I want to qualify that is that you have the debt schedule as present. There is some additional debt that's under temporary borrowing right now that's going to have to be slotted in here. And then, of course, when the council does get the budget for fiscal twenty-three, there possibly will be some. I'm not guaranteeing it, but there possibly will be some, you know, non-enterprise borrowing that may be proposed. So this will change a little, but it's going in the right direction. But I mean, I can't guarantee that at this point without doing further analysis, you know, on the debt schedule.
I mean, that's a question that I have. If we can absorb it into the budget, and it doesn't have to go to debt exclusion, then, fine. If we can't absorb it into the budget, and it is going to go to a debt exclusion, then obviously, we would need a vote of the people, by our own charter.
And I wouldn't be prepared to answer that at this session.
Okay. But that's just, I mean, that's my feelings on how I'm going to vote. Do I, do I want to have a new Diamond? Yeah, I do. But it's a matter of how do we pay for this? So that's the question I have. Even if we vote yes, Attorney Atkins, you're saying that you think if we vote yes, you're of the belief that it would still have to go to the voters?
I would say.
Because of the percentage?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm sorry.
Because of the percentage, I would say, given everything we know now, it would. I think that the issue with that possible flex in the percentage, if, in fact, the MSBA contributes more than originally committed, that fifty-one percent could be, could become even more than that. The problem is, we're going to be too deep into the project to know. And so, given what we know now, it looks to me like two dash one thirty-one applies, that it would have to be a vote.
So you believe they would have to be?
Point of clarification, please. Attorney Atkins, are you considering, are you taking into account the percentage of the other communities as well? Somerset, what their percentage will be when we get to four of us, fifty-one percent? Does that take into consideration that the other communities are going to pay a percentage of that as well?
It is. So if you, this is actually where this gets a little bit confusing, when you start looking at the percentages. If you take our percentage, and you start with the idea that the MSBA is going to contribute a certain percentage of this total project cost, of that total percentage being forty-nine percent, you grab any piece of that, so our seventy-six percent, those proportions stay the same. So, you know, we're going to take three-quarters of that pie. The proportion of contribution to, of MSBA contribution to our contribution, that proportion remains exactly the same. So if you take a smaller contribution, eight percent from one of the smaller towns, again, the contribution that they're paying versus the contribution the MSBA is paying, again, stays the same. You don't really, so you're not taking, you're not attributing more of the MSBA one-hundred-and-forty-five-point-seven million dollars to Fall River, or attributing more of that to Westport or Swansea or Somerset. That proportion is what it is to start, and as you divide it up, it stays the same. So, yes, that does factor in the contributions of the other towns.
Councilor in seat seven, you're on the floor still?
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. But, Ms. Iacapone, if we do vote, and it has to go, as Attorney Aitken said, it has to go to the voters, we can use upper money to pay for that, for the election?
In my opinion, I think it's eligible, you could.
That we could pay for that?
As long as the mayor approves, you have the use of those funds.
And do you know, Attorney Atkins, if there, the mayor is putting any of the upper money into any of these school building funds with either this one, or to D'Urphy throwing some money in to the bill that we owe there, or you don't know?
I, I can't speak to whether the mayor's made a decision. I know there's been a lot of different things discussed with regard to trying to pay down debt and make it easier on the taxpayer. I know that's one of his big priorities, but I can't, in good conscience, speak to exactly what he wants to do at this time.
Not a problem. I just wondered if that, you know, was on the table for discussion. And I just think, I mean, I'm ready to vote yes, and if you think that it has to go to the voters, then it has to go to the voters. To be honest, I would feel more comfortable, given the amount and giving, you know, what else we have. But even if it goes to the voters, if we find that the percentage changes or something, or that the city has more money to put into it so that the, it would come out of our budget and not out of, you know, another bill on a tax bill, that could still be done, that it could be lessened that way, correct?
Sure. However, I will say, if I may, and I know there's no question on the floor.
You may say whatever you choose to say.
Thank you, Madam Counselor. I appreciate that. If, under two dash one thirty-one, our ordinance, the matter does go to the voters, following an approval by this council, and the voters vote it down, that essentially still allows the Diamond School Committee to trigger Massachusetts Chapter seventy-one sixteen N, which is a vote of all four communities.
Right.
So even a disapproval vote of the registered voters of the city doesn't end this for the Diamond School Committee. It's only if the registered voters all turn it down that that would be, that would essentially force them back into the queue and trigger that three-to-seven-year possible.
Right. They would have to wait and go back again, like, I mean, when Mr. Orbin was the superintendent there, he came down and he talked about it way back then, about, you know, putting in a statement of interest, et cetera, to do what he's doing. So the only concern that I have is, what do we have to do with our charter? And with, you know, if it's over five million a year, which it will be because it's six-point-five, if it's over five million, that it needs voter approval. And if you're telling me that's what has to happen, then I'm ready to vote tonight. And we'll vote on what we feel, you know, on what we'd like to see happen to Diamond, and then it goes to the voters, to be ratified or whatever. But if you're saying it has to go to the voters?
That is my opinion.
Okay. Because my colleague in seat number one is feeling it doesn't have to go to the voters, we can take it out of the budget. So I don't know if he's feeling that it doesn't have to go to the voters because it can just come out of our budget, but even if it comes out of the budget, if it's over five million, it has to go to the voters, correct? Am I?
So the ordinance is silent as to how we pay for it? It doesn't really matter. So the idea of, you know, whether, whether it has to go to the voters or not, has to do with really just two things. Well, actually, three things. One, is it in order to incur some sort of debt? Now, I think one could argue that the debt to the Diamond School Committee is, in fact, a debt. It's an obligation that we have to them to repay monies that they are going to borrow, right? Whether or not we pay for that by incurring our own direct debt, I'm not sure is necessarily contemplated in the ordinance. But the first thing is, is there, is this an order that forces, that causes us to incur debt? The second.
Point of clarification, please. Honest line of questioning, so to save some time. So the, one of our options is to take no action. That triggers the ordinance as well?
That's my opinion.
To go to the voters.
My opinion is that an approval, whether it's an approval by vote or an approval by inaction, is an approval. And because it still triggers indebtedness, it's over five million dollars or twenty million aggregate in a fiscal year, and has less than fifty-one percent state subsidy, it triggers the ordinance.
I agree. I yield, thank you. Thank you, Ferro.
No. That's the question that I wanted answered, so I'm ready to vote whenever they want to do something. We're going to have to do an order. This can't just be a regular vote, it's got to go through an order, correct? So I don't know if the administration wants to send it down, if the council wants to put together an order. But with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor in seat four, Councilor Kilby? Councilor in seat five, Councilor Lee?
The one hundred, I'm sorry, the one-hundred-and-eleven-point-nine. Councilor in seat seven asked, over how many years? And I didn't, I didn't hear a direct answer to that. Has there been an actual number as to how? I know the six-point-five per year would bring it to about seventeen. Is seventeen the number that has been decided upon, or has that just been talked about?
So we have not run the numbers. So what I'm using are, there are numbers out in both the media and just, you know, general discussion in the community. We haven't run the numbers because this is a slightly unusual process, in that it bypasses the executive branch of Fall River. Though, section, or Chapter seventy-one sixteen H or N says that the regional school committee can borrow money either by the permission or approval of the member towns, or by a regional vote. So it doesn't actually require any request or action by the executive branch in a, in a plan, in our type of planned city. It goes directly to the legislative, which is the council. So we actually have tried very hard not to take a position on this, not to be seen as going, suggesting that we want one thing or the other to do. So we haven't run the numbers, we haven't done any of that. I'm just using the numbers that I know are out there, which is a suggestion of six and a half million dollars a year, or sixty-nine dollars per hundred thousand of assessed value.
So people watching, and actually, I believe some of the councils here believe, a no vote brings it to the people to be voted upon. A yes vote, from the conversation you just had, also brings it to a vote. Is that correct?
So a no vote would bring it, so a no vote would trigger that second part of Massachusetts Chapter seventy-one sixteen N, which is the regional vote. So it would, it would require the Diamond School Committee to administer a vote in all four towns. So Swansea, Somerset, Westport, Fall River. A yes vote, if, in fact, the ordinance is triggered, which I believe it would be, would be a vote just of Fall River.
The first part of your presentation, when you began, you gave the impression, the impression that we would be obligated to pay, if we do vote yes, we have an obligation to pay, but the administration hasn't decided upon how it would be paid, correct?
That is a true statement.
If the voters get a chance to vote yes or no to this in Fall River, and they vote no, are you saying we still have an obligation to pay because we vote yes?
No.
Okay.
So if the voters vote no, so if two dash one thirty-one forces us to have a community, Fall River community-wide vote, and the voters vote no, at that point, the Diamond School Committee can invoke sixteen N and do a four-community-wide vote.
As if we voted no in the first place?
That's correct.
Okay, got it. And just for, just for people to know, who are listening or watching, whatever, if we do have to do a thirty-year, if it's spread out to thirty years, then instead of six-point-five, it would be three-point-seven per year on that. So I believe, I have a feeling it's going to pass tonight, and if it does, I think the Fall River voter gets a chance to say yes and no to this, correct? Yes. All right. I'm going to be a yes as well, then. Thank you, I yield.
Councilor in seat two, Councilor Mara?
Just a point of clarification. Are those numbers accurate? Would you just, all right, so can we have?
I apologize.
Can we make a motion to have the superintendent come down, please, and just clarify what Councilor in seat five had just said? Because he made some numbers and some points, and he said certain figures, and I don't think they're correct, so I'd rather get the correct number.
Motion to waive the rules and allow him to come down?
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
Absolutely. Please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please.
If we're going to be telling people things, I just, not.
No, 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 no problem, no problem.
I'm not saying we're deliberate.
That's okay.
I'm just saying, if we're going to be giving people information, let's make sure that everyone gets the right information. I didn't say we're deliberate. I don't, I'm sure it wasn't deliberate, but let's just make sure that if there's numbers that have been put out there, that they're the correct numbers.
Point of information, also, we're putting out numbers without knowing the actual percentage rate in terms of borrowing either.
Right. Correct. Big difference from what I just heard, though. I think that's understood by everyone, that we don't understand it yet. As this goes on, the numbers will tighten. I've been through many of these school buildings, and it's always the case, it's all the same. Go ahead, please, just inform us of something that I think we should know.
Sure. So our, our plan is to borrow over thirty years. And the six-point-five annual is the thirty-year, the annual payment for thirty years of principal plus interest. So going, our plan is already thirty years. It anticipates, we're going to borrow, our estimated borrowing schedule is three times. A small chunk, about thirty million, the first time. So for the first few years of assessments, the four sending communities are going to receive a small bill, in the big picture, a small bill. The second round of borrowing, we would borrow about one-hundred-and-ten million dollars. That would be the second and third year of construction. So the sending municipalities' assessments would go up, because now we would have the first borrowing plus the second borrowing, and then we would finish off with the third borrowing of about five million dollars for the punch list at the end. So at the beginning, the assessments are small for a few years. Then the assessments get larger for a few years because of the one-hundred-and-ten million. And then at the end, the assessments go back to a very small figure. But it is thirty, thirty years, principal plus interest for the city at the approximate six-point-five million.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Councilor in seat two, you still have the floor?
Attorney Brilliant, you want to say anything?
Yeah, if I may. Attorney Gregory Brilliant, I'm counsel for Diamond Regional, and I'm very friendly with Mr. Aitken.
He's trying to speak into the mic.
While I may disagree that the borrowing is coming from the city and not Diamond, we'll leave that for another debate. However, the one question I've had for Seth and into the council is, if you take a vote to send it to a special municipal election, okay, if that's your vote? if you take a vote to send it to a special municipal election, okay, if that's your vote, what are you gonna be voting on? Because if you just vote to allow Diamond to build a new school, you still have the issue that's gonna come back before this council and how you pay for it. So I wanna make, like, kinda make that clear when you guys are deciding that, because what are you gonna, what are you gonna ask the voters to vote on? You want a Diamond school? Okay, they vote yes, it comes back to the administration to find in the budget, as, as Counsel Kadeem said. Are you gonna have another election or another question to ask for debt exclusion? See, so I think you gotta take these, and you gotta bifurcate it. As to which issue you're dealing with. Because sending it to the voters and saying, do you want a new Diamond school, and you get a yes vote, then what are you gonna do? Goes back to the administration to find the money.
May I, I believe the vote, the ballot question will have a dollar amount.
No.
No.
Yeah, all, all we need is a disapproval vote.
That's all it is.
Yeah, we don't have
From you guys.
For, for, for the purpose of the MSBA project, all we need is, does the city approve the project or not? From how, whatever mechanism is in place at the city level.
Because this, this is, and I, and I, again, mistaken is right. If, if you, if you accept the fact that a yes vote binds you above $5 million, if you agree with that principle, thus triggering this ordinance, then it's gonna go to the voters, but for what? For the, for the debt, then you have to deal with the debt. I think it still comes back to you guys somehow, some way, so you're right back in this, this predicament. So I, I may be wrong, and, and, but that's how I see it. And so, with, with that, I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Counselor in seat one, do you have a point of information?
Just a point of information, just so that everybody's clear. Massachusetts general law is very specific as to how ballot questions are worded. So any type of project that goes before a community for a referendum vote for a project cannot include a dollar amount. There is no dollar amount associated with that. So I just wanna be, caution everybody, you know, you're gonna send it to the, to the ballot, you're gonna ask voters to vote for it, and they're not gonna know a dollar amount unless they're following, you know, the city council and all the discussions. So they may just say yes, not knowing that it's $112 million, or if it's $30 million. You cannot put a dollar amount on the question. It's, it's not allowed on the Massachusetts general law. That was my point of information.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two, you still have the floor.
Thank you. I mean, I agree with my colleague, you can't put a dollar amount on it. But I think anyone who does go vote for this project is gonna be very familiar with what the expected dollar amount will be to the community. And then whether we wanna go debt exclusion or however else to pay for it, as Attorney Brilliant said, is a choice of this council and the administration. So I think the first thing we need to do is get approval vote.
Right.
So you can't avoid that. So there's nothing, there's nothing to stop it from happening. If we, you know, if it does have to go out, you have to get that approval. Whether it's approved from this body or approved from the vote, the taxpayers. Or whether it's just for, City of Fall River, because the other communities have already approved it, or it's all four communities together, because Fall River initially, when they do support it, if they don't support it, they'll go, have to go back out for another vote of Fall River and the other communities. But I think, Attorney Brilliant, to answer your question, we're gonna vote for approval to begin with, and then deal with the finances aspect of it, as we have with the other schools. That need to go down this road, same thing, I don't think it changes.
I just wanted to clarify, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Alright, with that, I yield, I think we've gone on enough, and I'm, I'm all set, thank you.
Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadeem?
Oh, no, that was, that was a, that was just a point of information.
Counselor in seat three, President LaBelle?
Thank you. Seth, I have just a couple of things I wanna clarify. One of them might have just been clarified. You're saying that if this body votes yes, it is, it would trigger the ordinance, which, it's not the conversation that I had the other day. We wouldn't then be automatically bound by our yes vote?
Can you, can you repeat the question? I apologize, I.
If we vote yes?
Yep.
You said this ordinance would be triggered?
Yes.
But our yes vote wouldn't, in the first place, bound the city?
My, no. My read of the ordinance is that your yes vote is only made effective, I think is the language in the, in the ordinance, ratified, is probably another way to put it, by the vote of the, the registered voters of the city.
Okay. And I agree with Attorney Brilliant, he, he is correct. It would just be a yes or a no in front of, in front of the voters. It wouldn't have a, a funding mechanism.
That's right.
Attached to it. So we would still be in the, in the same place. I do have one other question about the chart on the debt service. Counselor in seat one had said that the debt exclusion for Derfie is not on here. Like, the, we'd be reducing this by 5 million, the city and school principal and interest, is that correct?
So, I, I'm not.
Please begin to the microphone.
Oh, yeah, yeah, let's, sorry about that.
This chat, this, this debt schedule unfortunately is gonna be upgraded, you know, when we, when we start to look at the debt exclusion. My understanding is, is in fiscal '22, there wasn't any money used in the debt exclusion. So now we're gonna look at '23 and see what, what, what that goes. And then I'll take a look and see exactly what's gonna go long-term, probably sometime in February of '23. February '22, yeah, February, February of '23.
A year from now.
Yeah. But I mean, we'll know before then. We'll know what's gonna be slotted into the long-term debt.
So when I've been speaking to people about Diamond, no one is against Diamond at all. Says that no one was against Derfie, sending this to the voters. If we sent it for a debt exclusion, I think the numbers that were given, Attorney Aiken, you said for every $300,000, it was $210?
Thereabouts, it's, I think it's $208, or $207 added to the tax bill.
Added to their tax bill?
Yes.
But we don't have the number of what the Derfie debt exclusion is going to be added to the tax bill, correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
So we'd be asking.
So there's been estimates back.
If we went for a debt exclusion, we'd be asking the voters to take on $210 and still not knowing what their Derfie debt is.
Well, you know, they, let me, let me just clarify that. They, they know, they will know what the, what the debt is. It depends on whether it's all phased in, how it's phased in, is what, what the issue is.
When are they gonna know what the Derfie, what they're, what they're gonna see on the tax bill?
Very shortly, as soon as the budget starts to come together, there's a few, that process has already started. So that's gonna happen very shortly.
And you also said that that was based on $300,000. Now, the city is doing a full assessment this year, right?
That's right.
We, we paid for that, so a lot of the property assessments are going to go up.
That's, I would speculate that that is correct.
So I would be, I think it would be hard pressed to find properties at $300,000. Do we know what the average assessment is?
I wouldn't speculate at this point, because I, I think that's gonna change, like you just said. If we're using $69 per 100,000, that's the number. So I, I just used a $300,000 number, which, you know, may be more relatable for a lot of folks who might be watching. But it's, it's really 69 per 100,000.
Okay, so, and I appreciate that, I just think that there is a lot of moving parts. We don't have an order in front of us tonight to vote on this. This is a presentation by Diamond. We have the, the information from, from you folks, but we don't have an order in front of us to vote on. I wanna make that very clear. And I think that, I think two things. Sending this for a debt exclusion, I, I'm not sure that the, the folks can have an appetite for that. Even if they have their, their Derfie number in front of them, that's, that's a big hit on, on the tax bill. I'd be interested to see what the update of the, the long-term debt schedule is. You said we'd have that shortly. And Attorney Aiken, this timeline that you gave us, was this before they rescinded their vote and did a second vote?
So from what I understand, and the superintendent can certainly correct me if I'm wrong.
This is April, we have until April 11th, but did I hear a May date?
So the superintendent put out a May date, I calculated 60 days from the new vote, which I thought was April 10th? I'm sorry, February 10th?
But the MSBA also gave an extension, didn't they?
And that's probably the extension?
Yeah, so for full clarification, in December, when we got our award, our, our school committee voted to start the 60-day clock, which took us through February 15th. At that time, because several sending communities requested for us to try to get an extension on the, the 120-day window the MSBA gives us because of their town meetings, we did, we petitioned the MSBA, we finally have confirmed knowledge and documentation from the MSBA that they are willing to push our window from April 15th to July 15th. With that knowledge, at our last meeting, our school committee did rescind the December vote. So we weren't working with that February 15th deadline anymore. The, the new vote has us going from March 22nd to May 20th. And that is to align with the three town meetings that are taking place in May, if the Board of Selectmen decide that that has to go before the townspeople at that meeting.
So this council still has time. I don't, I'm not suggesting that we drag this out for the folks at Diamond. I know that they wanna get on with their project one way or another. But I think it, it would be an unfortunate vote of the council if we don't have all of the numbers in front of us, including what the Diamond number is, if we're talking about a debt exclusion, including an updated long-term debt. Having those numbers in front of us, what that looks like, and, and how it could be paid that way. And we have two other letters of intent, statement of intent request in front of us tonight for two other schools. They're for repairs, they're not for full schools. And I'm not saying that, 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 that it takes precedent or it doesn't take precedent. But, you know, we, we need, kids, kids do deserve state-of-the-art schools. We just need a very good understanding of how the city is going to pay for them, whether it's gonna go for a debt exclusion, or whether we have it in the operating budget. I think we'll be voting yes on the statement of, of intent requests for the other schools. It's what needs to be done in the city. But for the council to take any vote tonight without having all of the numbers in front of us, I, I don't necessarily think is the right way to go. We have two meetings in March that we can have the administration come down with, with updates. And we can look at the numbers then. With that, I yield.
Can I just give a point of clarification?
Yes.
Same that we've done to the three towns. If there is a debt exclusion necessary by any of the sending communities, that debt exclusion vote does not have to happen now.
Right.
Because you're not receiving an assessment until anticipated 2024, 2025, for, for the first bill to come out with our project. Any of the municipalities, if needed, could vote on debt exclusion associated with that cost, the Diamond costs to, to the local taxpayers in '22, '23, or '24. Just, just as a point of clarification.
Understood, but, but we need to know, the city needs to know how we're gonna be paying for it going forward, and, and where that's gonna be. Is it gonna be in our operating budget, or is it gonna be a debt exclusion, just like we did with, with Derfie?
Agreed. I just wanted to, we, we communicated that to the three towns, so I wanted to also make sure that the city was aware of the timeline for payment and assessment.
Thank you.
Counselor in seat five, Counsel Lee?
Just thank you to Counselor in seat two for bringing you down to the floor to clarify, because I was working off of 111.9 and the 6.5 that was mentioned in our presentation. However, one of the things that I know, one of the complaints from some, some of the, some of the constituents from the, from the previous discussion with Derfie was that the interest wasn't talked about a lot in the conversation. So I appreciate the fact that you added interest to the figures that you brought down to the floor, and that clarified it. And I wanna make sure, when I speak to constituent, that I understand exactly the information you're giving out to the public as well. So the 30-year, you, you clarified that it was 30 years, and it's at 6.5. Which brings, and please correct me where I'm wrong. It brings, instead of working off of 111.9, when you add the interest, you added another 84 million to it, correct? So it would make it 195, 195 million, when you add the interest to it?
So for, for full transparency, the, the project borrowing $147 million for, for the, the municipality's side, with an average interest rate of 4% over 30 years, the total cost of that $147 million borrowing is $253 million.
But 76%.
Correct, for Fall River.
Correct.
Fall River's percentage is, would be 193 million.
So about, alright, so we're, we're close to that, alright, thank you very much for that information.
Yep, interest and principal, yes.
Appreciate that, that's, that's, so now I can tell the public that's more closer to 193 overall. And this is all estimated, too. This isn't exact, because again, there are a lot of factors involved that can, that can make the numbers change. And I, and I think people know that, too. But I wanted to make sure that, and then I appreciate the fact that you came back to the floor and was asked for that, because I would hate to be working off the wrong numbers as well. So, thank you for that, and I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadeem?
Thank you, Madam President. So the, the debt schedule that you gave us includes Derfie.
Yes.
Okay. So, and I just, I guess, just wanna clarify, because Council President asked the question about the statement I made. So this includes Derfie. The debt exclusion numbers, I'm pulling right off of the projection that the administration provided us last meeting. So looking at the projections, FY '23, debt exclusion, parentheses, new high school, $5,086,156,000. So that's new revenue coming in for the debt exclusion. FY '24, debt exclusion, same exact number, $5,086,000, actually, it's a little higher. FY '25, $5,87,231. FY '26, $5,847,06. So I, I wasn't, when I said that we need to reduce these numbers by a debt exclusion, I wasn't just pulling them out of air, this is everything that was presented to, to us by the administration. So what I'm saying is, we've got numbers that are saying, in FY '23, which includes Derfie, total debt of $12,899,94. So $12,890,994, $5,86,156 coming in, in new revenue, above and beyond the 2.5% tax levy that we have. So that, you have to take that off, that's paying for, for debt.
That's what I was asking, Counselor.
So, it's there. Now, whether or not we can afford it is, is a different conversation. But I think we're losing sight of, and we're so hyper-focused just on debt and the affordability of debt, and ignoring the entire fact about the priority. What is the priority? Right, we hear about zero-based budgeting all the time. So if the priority is Diamond, when you're putting together the FY '23, the FY '24, the FY '25, because I do not support the debt exclusion. So if the debt exclusion comes down from the administration, I am voting no. Just like I voted no for Derfie, I do not support the debt exclusion. I truly don't feel that the act, average voter truly understands the implication of, you know, a debt exclusion and the impact to their taxes. So I don't support that. I support Diamond, I support the fact that we need to build it within the operating budget, but we need to obviously treat it like a priority. I wanna hear from the administration what their recommendation is. I, I, you know, I, I know we're not getting a recommendation now, but it's incumbent upon the mayor to, to make a determination as to whether or not he supports it. Because if Diamond's a priority, then, then when you're building a budget, you're gonna start with education. You're gonna start with police, you're gonna start with fire, and you're gonna build a budget that way. And then when you look at the bottom line and there's, there's a budget gap, you're not gonna reduce Diamond, you're not gonna reduce police, you're not gonna reduce fire, you're gonna cut somewhere else. So we need to know what the, what the priority's gonna be. Talking about all the numbers is, is fine, but it's whether or not we support it. It's $6 million, which seems kinda high, I mean, we're looking at 3, 3-point, I think it was 3.4, 3.7, if we just looked at interest alone. I mean, to, to say interest is, I mean, principal, to say interest is, is double that, it, it seems a little high. So I, I would think that number's a little bit lower, maybe it's not, maybe, maybe I'm off. But we've already have a voted debt exclusion for Derfie. So to me, do we support building a new school? And I, and I gotta be honest, because I was gonna bring it up, and I'm glad you did, Madam President, the fact that we can't then say, you know, the affordability issue, right? And I know all these various projects have different amounts, but we, we've got two, two new schools coming before us, for us to start the exact same process, you know, to have a, a, a statement of interest as to whether or not, and I know this is accelerated repair, so it's not to the extent that we're dealing with, but we're, we're looking at repairs to these schools as well. So I, I mean, it's just, at some point, we've gotta do what's fair and equitable. And that's, that's where I'm, I'm coming from. So from my standpoint, to be fair and equitable, Diamond needs this. We have a, we know exactly what the debt, and I know there's additional debt coming on, but we've got CDA money, we've got ARPA money that we're not hearing about, and we don't know how that's being spent. There is money out there to reduce, to reduce debt, or reduce the added increase to our debt schedule in the years moving out of FY '23, '24, '25, okay? We've got $70 million. So I think we need to figure out what we're doing in the affordability, affordability aspect. But I think we need to get some type of direction and leadership from, from the administration as to where they see Diamond to be as, as a priority. Because from my standpoint, I support it, I think it's a priority, let's do it. We've got, we're, with the debt exclusion, not saying I, I agree going to that entire amount of $5 million for the debt exclusion, but if we did, then that's freeing up $5 million in this, you know, the hypothetical $10 million that we wanted to see year in, and year out, in debt and interest payments in our, in our general fund. Which again, is, is just, it's an arbitrary number that we came up with just to maintain it for borrowing and capital, capital improvement purposes. We can go to 15 million, we can go to 16 million. Again, it comes back down to the affordability and the priorities. So I don't wanna lose sight of. sight of that. I just need to see from the administration where they are in terms of this project. I know in the past, when it was Durfee, listen, this entire room was filled, right, when it was Durfee. Okay? So I mean, there were people booing me, criticizing me when I said I didn't support a debt exclusion because I didn't support Durfee. And that's not the case. We don't have as many people here. We don't have any input coming down from the administration. I think it's unfortunate. We knew this was coming down. You know, I think we need to hear from the administration as to, number one, where do they see this? How do they feel like the funding needs to come down? Because as city counselors, we can't go out for a debt exclusion unless the administration comes down with an order saying they want a debt exclusion. So we can't even have that conversation. So I think we need some type of guidance and direction from the administration to tell us where they see this project and where it falls. Now, the vote that's before us is, do we support the Diamond project?
Sure.
I'm voting yes. And I know you asked the question of the city administrator in terms of, it requires going to a ballot question. It only requires going to a ballot question because of that ordinance of the percentage of 51%. If it was at the 51%, it would not require it. And if we voted on it, or even if it went to the ballot and it got shot down, it's still, as long as we approve it, it still goes through.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So the project would still be moving forward. So again, I just, I want to see a priority coming down. I'm supporting this. I'm ready to take a vote to support it and move forward and go on to the next steps. And then we can have the conversation when the administration is prepared to have a conversation in terms of how we're going to fund it and pay for it. But the question before us now is, do we support this project? My response is yes. And I'm ready to take that vote.
Motion to approve.
Wait a minute, can I just say something before you?
Excuse me, Counsel. I just want to clarify, Counsel Kadim. My question on the chart in front of us was that the revenue, the $5 million in revenue wasn't on here.
No, no, yeah, it's not on here, but it's on the projections that were submitted to us.
It's on what?
This is just an expense.
On the one that was sent to us.
But look, so these are going to be assumedly reduced by $5 million, well under that $10 million mark that they had given.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, it's not going to be reduced. The amount is going to be increased by Diamond. What I'm saying is, is that we said $10 million under the tax levy. Okay? Now you've got another funding source that's coming in for $5 million. You just don't ignore that $5 million. You've got to add that to the tax levy piece. That's what I'm saying is the disconnect. And I probably should have chose my words a little bit better in terms of reducing it, but we've got $5 million that's being projected, you know, in years out from FY '23.
That was my statement, that this doesn't reflect the $5 million in revenue coming in from the Durfee debt exclusion.
Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President Diem.
Just for my, I feel like my head is swirling at this point. In terms of the ordinance, essentially what you're saying is, we have to vote to violate the ordinance to trigger a vote of the people.
To violate the ordinance? I don't understand.
No.
Well, the ordinance states we can't authorize anything over $5 million.
It actually says that an order authorizing over $5 million is only effective if it goes to the voters. So you can vote, and then the vote is ratified or made effective by the people's vote, by the special ballot.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So the city council has to act first, and then the people would essentially ratify or make effective that act.
Okay, because I've always, all right, I've always been under the impression that we couldn't vote on something that would be over $5 million. So it's a little bit different. Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Pereira.
Yeah, I just want to say that I agree with my colleague in seat number one relative to the fact that you have $34 million in ARPA, another $34 million from ARPA, plus the $17 million from Bristol County, from the assessment, the ARPA money that we got from Bristol County. You've got like $87 million. Take some of that money and put some of that money towards some of these schools. Cut it down, help the taxpayer out, give something back. And we don't have an answer from administration whether or not we're going to do that? I say, tell them that's what we want. Throw a little bit of this money into these schools so that it helps our taxpayers. That's what our concern is. How are we going to pay for this? And how are we going to pay for it without really not burdening the taxpayer? Of course, we don't want to burden the taxpayer, but there are services we need. And unfortunately, everything costs money, everything. So building Durfee, building Diamond, there is a cost. So if we could have some of that, a couple of million here or there, put in, you've got from now, you know, you're going to have more money coming in next year. It's there. It's like, what are we doing if we're not helping our budget with this extra money that we got? I don't know, Mr. Iacapone, help me on this. And you know, Seth, I was up in the office with him and you, and I clearly told him what I thought. He heard me loud and clear. But I agree. I mean, the money's there. Come on, figure out what you're going to do with it to help taxpayers. And, you know, I agree also with what Counsel Kadim said. The vote is just, do we approve Diamond? Boom. That's the vote we have to take tonight. And there is no order, quite frankly. The mayor doesn't have to bring an order on anything. The council can do an order, too. Am I right, Madam Clerk? So either way.
Counsel, a vote of this council saying, yes, we want a new Diamond.
Pardon? I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
A vote of this council saying, yes, we want a new Diamond, holds us to funding it.
Right.
Just as long as you know that.
Then if we have to fund it some other way, you've got the money from ARPA, you've got money here or there. Do what you need to do. We're going to be talking and talking and talking at this to nauseam. It's a lovely job sitting here. The tough part is, you've got to take a vote. So take a vote. Take a vote. You want a new school? Well, you know. Take a vote.
Do you yield, Counsel?
With that, I yield. I've been here too long, too many years, to see things going around and around and around and around. Let's go. I'd say something.
Do you yield, Counselor?
It would probably be a bad word in there, so I can't say it, but get off the pot.
You yield, Counselor. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I yield.
Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Repouzou.
So what stops us from just getting a projection of how we're going to pay for it?
So there's a couple of things. First is that, you know, there's been a couple questions throughout the night as to why the administration hasn't either given more information or taken a different position. This is very different than Durfee, or this is very different than anything where the scope of the project is limited to the city. This is a regional project. And because the statute forces, doesn't force, but the statute directs that the decision-making essentially go past the executive branch in a city like ours and goes directly to the legislative, it's really, at this point, until there's an approval by the council, it's not really our place to start talking about how we're going to pay for it, or even what we think about the project, or what a priority it is. And I'm absolutely sensitive to Counsel Kadim's point, which is, you know, we really need some direction from the administration with regard to priorities. But at this point, we've tried very hard not to give any appearance of a thumb on the scale. It is very much within the purview of the council, and we're not going to try to invade that in any way until the council then approves it, at which point I know that this administration is for education. I think everyone in this room is. So at that point, then we can have a real conversation about where the priorities are, how we might pay for it. But the first step, as Counsel Pereira said, is to understand whether or not the council's going to approve it. So at this point, if I were to talk about how we're going to pay for it, that really gets into a policy question that I'm not in a position to talk about.
Which still doesn't answer my question.
That's true.
And that's my issue, is that we're talking a lot of hypotheticals. So can we hypothetically put together something that says X amount of dollars will come of Y and Z? Why can't we do that?
Just so I understand the question.
Yep.
Are you saying that before the council votes to approve or disapprove, that your preference would be to see a hypothetical financial breakdown of how we would pay for it?
Correct.
Okay. I suppose that we could try to do that, given what we know about the proposed cost of the project and the contribution from?
An estimate at best. I'm not looking for exact to-the-penny numbers, but I'm looking for an estimate of how we are going to deal with it, how are we going to approach it, instead of, well, we're going to have to pay for it, sure, and then we're going to figure out later how we're going to pay for it, which could be problematic.
Just a point of clarification. Attorney, did you just say that you, that the council should take a vote whether we are in approval of Diamond or not, without having the financial information on how we would pay for it?
No, I asked the council if his question was, or if the question that he was asking required the financial breakdown of how we might pay for it prior to him proposing that the council takes a vote. So I didn't necessarily make a statement that they should, but I asked if that was what the intention of his question was. Is that what you're asking, Madam President?
Yes. Counsel Repouzou, you have the floor.
Yep. I yield. Thank you.
Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadim.
Thank you. I think that was a great question by Counsel in seat eight, and I'll respond for you to give you an answer. Absolutely, and it should have been done last month when they got the letter. So I'm not sure why now all of a sudden we're going to wait for the council. I mean, this is, I think when we talk about, you know, just working in partnership, you need to know where the administration stands. We can put any order together, but he can veto it. Do we have the support? Like, I mean, we need the information in order to be, to make an educated decision. So we should have known, coming into this meeting, where the administration stands with Diamond, how they plan on funding it. Are they going to make it a priority within the general fund, or are they going to look to go to the debt exclusion? That's, listen, that's what leadership is. I want to call a spade a spade. That's what leadership is. That's what the executive branch is supposed to be doing. I'm confused by the response, but the simple answer is, yes, it's easy. We should have it. We should be able to get it. And we should know where Mayor Coogan stands today. Does he support Diamond or does he not support Diamond? If he supports Diamond, does he support it with a debt exclusion, or does he support it within the general fund? We just got, we just got our five-year projection. How does that five-year projection not include Diamond coming before us? At least a recommendation as to whether or not it stands. It's outside of it, it's not included. We knew it was coming down. So the answer is, yes, you should have had the information. I yield.
Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President.
I would make a motion at this, oh, now we have to wait till full counsel?
It is in full counsel under priority communications.
All right, I'll make the motion then. I yield.
I would just also like to clarify that when Counsel Vice President and I had met with the administration, we had asked them to come down with the financial information on what this would look like. I just, because how could we vote on it without having those answers? Anything further from the council? Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Repouzou.
And I just, thank you, Counsel in seat one, for clarifying. And I want to be clear, I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt here. I just, you know, when I make an informed decision about something, I want to know the facts in front of me in terms of how it's going to affect taxpayers in the city. And I think I'll echo, I mean, I'm an educator for bloody sake. I mean, I live and breathe students and kids and education all day long. My question to that, my question, sitting in this chair in this role, is how we are going to pay for it, how is it going to affect the taxpayers, how is it going to affect all of us? That is required to make an informed decision. To make a blind decision would be wrong of me to do. So I, and I don't think it's a question of, yes, no, maybe, who knows? It's a question of, how are we going to go forward and deal with this? Because my biggest thing, short term, we vote yay. Long term, how do we pay for it? And we often forget about the long-term part. And that's what I'm concerned about. We can just keep adding and never really hone in how we're going to deal with it the most effective way. So that's my concern sitting here. That I yield. Thank you.
Anything further from the council?
Motion adjourned, five minutes.
Second. Motion adjourned made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Two-minute recess. So voted. Two-minute recess.[703.82]